I'd like to call the March 19th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first order of business is invocation by County Manager, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness and right thought. Teach us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now we have the Girl Scouts that's going to lead us in the pledge allegiance to our flag. Thank you for being here.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We ask all that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers two public opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period shall be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second period comment, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the Speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period at the end of the agenda. With no other order being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agendas is in order.
Motion to adopt the business agenda?
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye. Item two, approval of the items on the consent agenda. A motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor of items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody that had, any Commissioner that has concerns or issues or discussion for further information on the consent agenda can have that removed and we can discuss it at the end of the meeting. Any Commissioner has anything they want to move? Item number three, public comment, Mr. Cotton.
No one has signed up for the first public comment period.
Item number four, presentations, sir. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the first proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Stop the Bleed Joint Initiative, whereas the Stop the Bleed National Awareness Campaign was launched by the White House Administration on October 6th, 2015, and whereas Onslow County Government is partnering with Naval Medical Center Camp Lejeune to put knowledge gained by first responders and military medical personnel into the hands of the public to save lives, and whereas 40% of deaths in the first 24 hours after a traumatic event is due to hemorrhaging, and whereas this collaborative training opportunity will increase community engagement and willingness to act during a bleeding emergency. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges and commends Onslow County Government and Naval Medical Center Camp Lejeune for their significant contributions made to our community through the Stop the Bleed Initiative and recognize the long-term partnership and success as a result of this endeavor presented this 19th day of March 2018. It is requested that Captain James L. Hancock, Commanding Officer Naval Medical Center Camp Lejeune, and staff come down to the front to accept the proclamation. The Chairman is requesting that the entire Board present the proclamation. Mr. Chairman.
Captain Hancock, we're, we do this with pleasure to present this proclamation to you as a group effort to show that we are in this together and we do things together. And I remember many years ago when I was with the City Police Department, we had a standing, Paul will remember, with the Shore Patrol. Shore Patrol came out and they rode with us, they walked with us, we made arrests together. And the minor infractions that happened with the young military folks out in their town, we just handed them over to the MPs. There was no criminal charges. They went back to the base and the base took them and kept us from crowding our courts. And that was the best partnership I can say that we ever had. It saved us a lot of time and money and it saved the troops a lot of time and money. That's just one more thing that we're doing now that will commemorate this partnership. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you so very much.
Step up here and...
So for my team and I, I wanted to just say thank you for the help in hand EMS here in the county, second to none. Quite frankly, the citizens of Onslow County should be very, very proud of the folks who stand up and represent them every day. For the Commissioners and Mr. Cotton who have really helped us put this forward and make sure this gets done, we have our young men and women coming back from combat and they're going to save, they're going to help folks save lives. This is a big deal in the fact that if you take a look at, for all the AEDs that we put in airports, and you all, everybody in the room is about that age where you remember when that wasn't so, for every one life that it saves, these tourniquets in this educational save eight. Just in the last week, if you take a look at the traumas that have come to our medical center from out in town, tourniquets have been a big piece of saving some of those people's lives. So it's a big deal. It means a lot to me as a private citizen here in this county, that the Commissioners here are taking this seriously and coming on board and helping us make us be better. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chairman.
You gotta pull this down. I just want to say as a retired NCIS, I've been here since 1990, I've watched the hospital grow, spent a lot of time, a lot of hours in the emergency room, but there's something I think that I wanted to kind of mention. I took a tour of the hospital. Where's Riley at? Riley's somewhere in here. And she had set up a tour and I am absolutely amazed from 1990 till now, I retired in 2012, the changes, but I think what's really significant is, aren't you guys, haven't you been upgraded to a trauma center?
We have, yes, sir. So we got our verification from American College of Surgeons back from December and that was, that's been good far forward and we hope to be designated by the state before the summer so that we can treat all patients on the coast everywhere. So we're working with the state very hard, you know, to make that happen.
That's significant. And when I was told that they were upgraded and they did so well to become a trauma center, I think that's significant not only for the base, but definitely for the community. And I will tell you this, I had some advanced lifesaving training. We were working narcotics operations and a couple of corpsmen came over from the hospital. I didn't like the breathing tube too much down the nose, but they even taught us how to, you know, if you had a punctured lung, what to do. The training that they provided was invaluable. In fact, it became mandatory for our agents to carry tourniquets now when we went on a raid because of the things that we were taught by the combat lifesavers. So I just want to applaud you and I think they deserve a round of applause because as a trauma center, that's huge for a hospital. So congratulations.
Probably the oldest one here, but one of the things I want to say is that the medical has come so far. I'm a Vietnam veteran and a lot of us weren't saved in the field. Today, your trauma centers and the intrepid head injuries is just amazing to me. I keep an eye on what goes on on the base pretty much and the wounded warriors barracks. I mean, I've been out there many times and what you do for our military is amazing and thank you. And thank you from this old fellow.
I just want to say I appreciate this symbol of cooperation between the medical center, Onslow Memorial Hospital, Onslow County. I believe that the way we need to serve our citizens of Onslow County is through partnerships. We need to work together. There are things that the medical center can do that the hospital can't do and things that the hospital can do that the medical center doesn't need to do. And I think we need to work, work on those partnerships and make them even better. Thank you.
I also would like to echo some of those sentiments and thank our Naval Hospital and all our military who are an integral part of our community and working with us as the county, with the county to provide this training which can save lives. And so that's the bottom line, is saving lives. We appreciate it.
Thank you a lot.
have prepared a presentation which the commanding officer has been generous to provide for us. So as soon as the Commissioners are ready and we have it queued up.
So I'll try to be brief in my comments. After the tragedy that happened in Sandy Hook, America woke up to the casualties of the idea of needing to be able to provide trauma care in a military-like fashion in unfortunate civilian circumstances. We've seen far too many of these in the years past, whether it's been Las Vegas, it's been Parkland, it's been that area. And the American College of Surgeons got together and they got a Hartford consensus. And what that said was that basically they wanted to use all aspects in order to train all of our citizens in the country to be able to use tourniquets appropriately in order to save lives. Because that life you're saving may be in the school, it may be here in the building, it may be out on the street, it may be in the airport. It is a small amount of time, 60 minutes to 75 minutes with very little expense, in order to provide the knowledge base for anybody to apply a tourniquet, not only when, but how, and in order to save lives that go forward. We partnered with Onslow Memorial and especially with Onslow County EMS and now with you, the Commissioners, in order to make this happen. To date, we've done 45 classes, there's been 755 responders trained, and 103 instructors have been trained. It is our goal to train the county as a whole, to get into the school districts, to every, every citizen, to give them the knowledge and provide that. Our corpsmen that are providing this are mostly combat vets. They are folks that have done this live to save lives on the battlefield and we want to bring that forward. The next event that we'll try is the Live Community Expo. It's on March 31st, beginning in the morning at 9 through 1700 at the Jacksonville Commons. I encourage everybody to come out and get that training. You may be able to save the lives of you or your family. We're looking to get into the Onslow County schools and across the public. Mr. Cotton and the Commissioners have made it appropriate for us to get throughout the departments. I know the Sheriff's Department have invited us in and we're doing those briefs as we go forward. We really look forward to working hand in hand with you on this amazing adventure of getting forward and making our community safer for one and all. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Captain Hancock. I appreciate you taking time and coming tonight and briefing us on the program. And as we talked before the meeting started, there may be some other programs that we can partner with Onslow Memorial with and see what can be done on the total picture of health because our county, we have so many veterans here now and we have so many people that's military related. So the hospitals, even though based in their civilian Onslow Memorial, go, you know, provide services, but there's so much, so big of a need for the facility to stay viable here and the demand is getting more and more, but the funds are dwindling. So now we're going to have to find ways in order to keep everything viable and I think working with the base and Naval Hospital and Onslow Memorial and other outline hospitals, we can, we can make it happen.
Yes, sir. Dr. Burlington Deal, the CEO at Onslow Memorial, is an absolute professional. She's been very, very easy to work with. I look forward to the challenges of getting her through some really complex issues that have plagued the community for years, but we're all in.
All in it together.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think item five, Mr. David Grovedall.
Mr. Chairman. We still have the audit presentation.
Oh, B, okay. Scott Bailey?
Yes, sir.
You thought I forgot you, didn't you?
Ah, no, not at all, not at all. How are you this evening?
Good. We always like to hear from our folks in the audit business.
Yes, definitely the most, most exciting time for most people's evening. So I'll try to keep my comments as brief as possible. As of February 28th, we completed our audit of the county, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm nursing a cold from over the weekend, apologies in advance. We completed our audit of the county for the year ended June 30, 2017. This was an audit performed under generally accepted audit standards, also known as GAS, and under governmental auditing standards, the abbreviated version, also known as Yellow Book, which also included what's called a single audit component because of the significant federal and state grant funding. This is pretty much the required audit for any county in North Carolina. And ultimately, the result was we issued an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. So that's kind of the, kind of the thumbs up, that what we're seeing was presented correctly, fairly, in all material respects with governmental accounting standards. So that's kind of the first big thumbs up here. During the course of our audit, we had a change in our timing and scope. As the audit progressed in the, well, as, I should say, as time elapsed, we experienced a change in primary partner on the engagement. That was shifted over to me and I became involved beginning the first week of January. So that resulted in a little bit of a shift in our timing. However, we were successful in completing the engagement. Our audit focused on areas of significant estimates and judgments. Those include some of the highly movable items such as the landfill closure liability. Obviously pensions and pension valuations are significant. The county holds several investments to make best use of cash. The fair values of those require some judgment and estimation. These were the kinds of areas where we focused our attention during the performance of the audit. During the audit, we observed the implementation of a couple new governmental accounting standards this year. One of the things we've been seeing is that we're having to implement an average of about two to three new standards every year, which is why you may notice that for several years on end and for probably a couple more to come, you'll see restatements of beginning balance. And really what that is, is that's implementation of new, new accounting standards. Most of these are geared towards pensions and visibility into those. We encountered no disagreements with management, we're happy to report during the course of the audit, we encountered no instances of fraud or noncompliance or any other, shall I say, naughtiness while we were conducting our audit. During the course of the audit, we noted three findings and if you have any questions on those, you know, those are available, I can discuss those as, as requested. But all in all, once we got it going, the audit was a success and we were able to, able to issue that unmodified opinion. If you'd like, I can run through a few financial highlights if that would work for you. At the end of the year, we noted that the assets, excuse me, assets and deferred outflows exceeded the liabilities and deferred inflows for the county by about 68, close to $69 million, which is fund balance. Overall, the net position, you'll notice, decreased about $18 million. However, that was largely the result of about $42 million in capital projects that were completed and went online. So you can see a very direct correlation between those two, between those two activities which are part of management's long-term capital plan. The general fund decreased by close to $3.5 million to a fund balance of 78.8 million. Of that, 27.8% is assigned, committed, and unrestricted, unassigned, uncommitted. 12% is uncommitted but, but assigned and also unrestricted. And about 2% is uncommitted, unassigned, and unrestricted. So ultimately, we feel like the, the fund balance for the county is in pretty good shape, that the, ultimately, the financial condition appears to be very, very stable. So a lot of good things happening there. And I think we also noted that the bond rating improved slightly over the course of the fiscal year. So those were kind of some of the key highlights that we noticed through the course of this. Are there any questions that you had related to the audit?
Any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bailey? Appreciate the report, sounds real detailed, and I'm really pleased with the fund balance that we have and thanks to our management team, Mr. Cotton and staff for keeping us within the boundaries and keeping us, you know, above the standard of 8%, which we're way, way above that, but...
Absolutely.
We, we've got a lot of irons that will be in the fire this coming budget year and I'm sure we'll be looking at ways to reduce that fund balance, but we want to keep it in a safe level. Any other, no more comments or from the other Commissioners? Do we need a motion to accept the audit report? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate it. Sorry I skipped over there. I thought...
Ah, that's quite all right.
You thought you were going to skate, didn't you? Well, you thank this man right here for bringing it back.
Too much excitement, right?
He don't let much, much get by, I'll tell you that.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, item five, Mr. David Grovedall.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Naval Medical Center Camp Lejeune and Onslow County Emergency Medical Services desires to enter into a mutually beneficial partnership for the purpose of training healthcare personnel. This agreement will allow military healthcare personnel to obtain real-time experience with pre-hospital management of ill and injured patients by participating in ride-along with Onslow County ambulances at no additional cost to the county. Onslow County EMS personnel will also obtain leadership and medical best practices from military members that have been deployed to theaters of operation. It is respectfully requested the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider approving this agreement between Onslow County EMS and Naval Medical Center and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I will say this, this is the very program that I talked about earlier when we had Shore Patrol that actually rode with the officers and they actually walked with the officers and we can never discount the value of having an extra set of eyes and ears and hands when you're out there in an emergency situation. So I wholeheartedly support this also. A call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consolidated agreement between the State of North Carolina and Onslow County, Ms. Angela, our Health Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Cotton. Each year, the Onslow County Health Department receives state funding to provide essential public health services to include environmental health services, maternal and child health, family planning, communicable disease, community and HIV education. The attached annual consolidated agreement for fiscal year 2019 outlines the responsibilities of the local health department, such as meeting the requirement for fiscal controls, auditing and monitoring of programs, personnel policies that comply with the county and state, as well as patient confidentiality and adherence to civil rights regulations. This agreement requires annual renewal. The Onslow County Health Department Director with approval from the county officials must sign the consolidated agreement in conjunction with the State of North Carolina. The consolidated agreement for fiscal, fiscal year 2019 has been reviewed by the county attorney. We respectfully request that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners accept the consolidated agreement and authorize Ms. Lee to sign and authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board.
Motion to approve.
Second. I hear a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion and the second signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, Mr. Cotton, that's fire rescue commission appointments.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Onslow County Fire and Rescue Commission, of course, was created by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to oversee the volunteer fire departments and rescue squads throughout the county. The commission is comprised of three members from the fire service and three members from the rescue service, as well as the Director of Emergency Services, the Onslow County Finance Director, and a county commissioner appointee, a licensed insurance agent, and a member-at-large who does not have any affiliation or connection with fire or rescue. Each seat is a two-year term. Seats three and six expired on March 7th of 2018 per the adopted bylaws for the Fire Rescue Commission. Positions one through three shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners from names recommended by the county fire chiefs. Positions four through six shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners from names recommended by the county rescue chiefs. Both the Fire Chiefs Association Collective Group and the Rescue Chiefs Association Collective Group shall submit no less than two nominations for each of their vacant seats. The members must be an active member of a volunteer fire department and/or rescue squad. Minutes of the meetings at which nominees are selected must be forwarded to the county with the nominations. The Onslow County Fire Chiefs of the volunteer fire departments met on January 11th, 2018 and nominated the following individuals for your consideration for seat three, Mr. Ricky Hardison and Mr. Tim Bruins. The Onslow County Association Rescue Squad met January 2nd of 2018 and nominated for seat six, Mr. Matthew Heslip and Mr. Jim Metro. Ballots have been prepared for the Commissioners. All applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of two individuals, one in seat three, volunteer fire department category, and seat six, volunteer rescue squad category.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have the results. For seat three, volunteer fire department category, the Board has selected Mr. Ricky Hardison. And for seat six, the rescue squad, correction, volunteer rescue squad category, the Board has selected Mr. Matthew Hayslip. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any of those individuals here tonight?
I'll see them.
Anyway, congratulations to them. I guess you'll notify them. Item seven, consent agenda, we didn't have anything that was removed. We're now at item eight, which was a public comment. Anyone signed up, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, managers' comments.
Without stealing the Commissioner's thunder, I'll defer my comments about the trip to DC. I'll defer to them. Thank you.
Commissioner's comment, Commissioner Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. A couple of things I wanted to talk about. First of all, the Jacksonville Board of Realtors raised money and bought material and started building a gazebo in our Discovery Gardens on Saturday. So, if you get a chance to go by and take a look at it, it's just in the beginning, but the Realtors are gonna be out there working for the next few weekends to get that gazebo built, and it'll be a wonderful addition to our Discovery Gardens, which is a beautiful place. It's gonna be really pretty when the flowers bloom here in the spring shortly. So, invite you to discover the gardens. Also want to mention that the Salvation Army is having a grand opening of their new building at 535 Bell Fort Road on Wednesday, between 11:00 to 1:00. The public is invited. I'd love for you to stop by, if you get a chance, stop by and take a look at the new building on 535 Bell Fort Road between 11:00 and 1:00 on Wednesday. And mentioning our trip to DC, we were, three of us were privileged to be able to represent Onslow County at the North Carolina County Commissioners White House Conference. And I'll just mention the three, I guess, three takeaways that I got from our visit. We got to see a lot of important people, and a whole lot of secretaries to the deputy, to the undersecretary of the deputy of somebody else, I don't know. But in takeaway, we got a lot of information about the opioid crisis. I believe that the President made an announcement this afternoon about 56 initiatives that the federal government's gonna take in response to the opioid crisis, and that kind of goes along with what we've been working on hard in Onslow County. So, I think the federal government's on our side for that. Also, the President's infrastructure bill, he wants to designate at least around 25% of his infrastructure bill to rural infrastructure, that's roads, rails, water projects. So, that could be a benefit for Onslow County. We learned a lot about that. I think the biggest takeaway was that we got to get contact information for about 30 of the individuals in the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, which is the President's office to mediate between the federal government and local governments. And we now have contact information for about 30 people, for every department, from agriculture to veterans. And if we have local issues that we need to, that we need federal help with, then we now have contact people with telephone numbers and email addresses of somebody in the federal government that we can talk to, to help us out. So, I think we got some really good takeaways from that. It was a great day, a long, busy day, but that's all I'll say, and we thank you for being here. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Price?
Yes, on Saturday, the students across Onslow County involved in vocational programs were participating in Skills Day at Coastal Carolina Community College. And so, I want to congratulate those students who participated in Skills Day. It was a good event. You had kids laying block, you had kids working on a construction project, you had auto mechanic component, you had drafting, welding, all of those key skill areas that we're gonna be needing a whole lot of folks in. And so, I was glad to see your kids from across Onslow County participating in that. Also, I'd like to point out that our two teams, our Lady Cardinals from Jacksonville High School represented the county well in the state finals at Reynolds Coliseum, and the North Side Monarchs, who came up short as well, still represented the county well. They played hard, both teams played hard all the way to the final seconds. And so, that's something to take pride in, as a community, and wanted to mention that. Also, was able to participate in the close-up program, as most of the Commissioners were able to participate in that a couple of weeks ago, and that's just a great program, you know, where students interested in government, how government works, from across Onslow County, got a chance to gather together. And we had a mock Commissioners Meeting, they were able to go out to the airport and hear from the Sheriff's Department, and hear from the EMS folks, and tour the airport itself. And so, it was a great opportunity. Kids asked great questions of the DA, of different people that were able to speak, the Superintendent of Onslow County Schools. The kids were prepared with excellent questions. You could tell this was a sharp group. And so, congratulations to them. I hope they enjoyed it as much as I did. Also, the White House visit was great, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go to the White House. And so, we heard from Vice President Pence, we heard from the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Ben Carson, and Kellyanne Conway spoke to us about the opioid crisis. And she brought out the three-pronged attack against the opioid crisis in America through education, treatment, and enforcement. I was glad to hear that treatment component that we in Onslow County are already working on. We had a meeting the day before we left for Washington DC on the Mental Health Task Force. We met and talked about that. We're shooting for a gold date of August, that's best-case scenario, and things don't always work out as you planned, though. So, we may have to fall back to September or October, but we're hoping not to. We're hoping to be able to have an opening in August of this year. So, that was also another important issue there that was brought out. And that's about it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Vickell?
Didn't leave much of the White House stuff left, does it?
No.
I want to thank the Naval Hospital for being here, and thank you for your partnership. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to this Board of Commissioners. But one of the things that the President was supposed to release today in New Hampshire was President Donald Trump's initiative to stop opioid abuse and reduce drug safety and demand. And like Price was saying, it was a three-pronged, and listen to Conway, she's just an amazing individual, listen to her talk, but to reduce the drug demand through educational awareness and preventing over-prescriptions, cut off the flow of illegal drugs across our borders and within the communities, save lives now to expand opportunities for proven treatments for opioid and other drug addictions. She was amazing, and then we listened to her last night on some conversation that we had. It's just amazing to see what the government, what the President's trying to do, and what the federal government's trying to do. But the trip that we had was amazing, even though it was, I think, Dave and I had the same problems, the jet lag kicked both of us for two days, because we flew up that morning, we flew back that night, so 12:30, and Eve and I went home to Swansboro. But it's initiatives, the initiatives that the President's taken, and that the counties are taking, the state is taking, I think there was about 300 Commissioners from North Carolina there. It was amazing, the conversations that they had with all these individuals. And I can tell you this much, that the, and Lieutenant Governor Forrest was there also, and he was in town doing some business, and they brought him in front of us. But Vice President Pence is an amazing individual to listen to. He was down-to-earth, and he spent probably 20, 25 minutes with all the Commissioners, talking to us. It was just amazing to have our government really standing for what we all believe in, and I want to thank the Governor for that, and I want to thank everybody that was involved. The President's staff is just amazing. It's just amazing people that I've seen there, and thank everybody for being here. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, Nat?
First, I just want to say thanks to the Naval Hospital. I'm waiting for your name change. I know you're getting ready to change it to Trauma Center, maybe, or something like that. I'm hoping to hear that, because I think it'd be great to call yourselves, you know, the Camp Lejeune Naval Trauma Center, or something like that, because I think you guys deserve it. You know, hospitals come a long way, and I appreciate the initiative, because I can't stress enough the importance of the training that you guys are gonna be able to provide, especially from those that have been in combat, that have seen it firsthand. So, I applaud your efforts, Captain, and I look forward to the future with that. You said something today, when you were talking about the medic out there and the triage, and how a medic has saved your life in Vietnam and things like that. Well, it's the same thing with this task force and this mental health detox center that we are hoping to stand up in August. And one of the things I wanted to brief you on, and I'm gonna keep talking about this thing, because it's getting closer and closer, and I can't praise the staff for the hard work, especially Sherry. Sherry is on it, and when you say a delay, if Sherry has anything to do with it, it'll be up and running by August. We had a meeting that Sherry ran the meeting for us in terms of the RFP, in terms of the construction, and it was clockwork. And I gotta give it to you, Sherry, you were right on it. And we're looking to stand this up by August, September maybe is the latest, but we're pushing for August, and I think everybody, to include Trillium, is on board with this, wants to get the RFP out. I think it's gonna be fantastic, and like you said, it's triage. Okay, this is where we go, to get the triage, to take care of the acute need immediately, and then to send these individuals to long-term treatment. But with the opioid funding and things that are coming up, like you said out in the hallway, this is just the beginning. We're already well ahead of most counties in this state as to what we're doing. And now, with the partnership with the Naval Hospital and things that we're doing together, I mean, I don't think there's anything that we can't conquer or tackle in the future, and I'm excited about that. So, in August, yes, I think we'll all be very, very happy when that center is open and treatment starts for the citizens here in Onslow County. And one last thing I want to say to everybody, I know this is North Carolina, I'm sorry for your UNC fans. Okay? They're not the only team in the ACC. So, I'm gonna just give a shout-out to my alma mater, Florida State, and here we go, '75 Xavier '70. And I know they're going to the Sweet 16 against Gonzaga, so all you ACC fans out there, please become a Seminole fan for at least the next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I also thank Captain Hancock for being here, and all the first responders that's here tonight, taking time out of your schedule, and I know how busy Captain Hancock is with the base Naval Hospital, and how trying that is to get away, but thank you for being here and coming tonight and accepting proclamation, and partnering with us for the ride-along program is a valuable tool. I want to make a quick comment on the Onslow Water and Sewer Authority Board that I sit on, and Commissioner Bennett also sits on that board. This past week, we approved a new ordinance. It's called Backflow, and I know a lot of you, I don't want to educate you on what a Backflow is, but it costs the individual customer right at anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 to put that Black Backflow device in. And then, every year, you have to have it inspected, and it costs $75 per Backflow for inspection. By changing the rules and following the state law and eliminating some of the local ordinance, as we reduced 13,000 requirements of Backflow devices, we reduced it to 4,000. So, that's gonna be a huge savings to our customers, not only the customers on Wausau, but the customers in Onslow County. That's a huge amount of money, especially when you're talking about $75 a year for inspection. Even if it's working right, you still have to have an inspection. The other thing we voted on that was significant and passed was anybody that's 65 years or older that's having a failing water system, you know, their well gets contaminated, and elderly folks that cannot afford a $3,500 water meter. On Wausau now has changed the ordinance, so they've got a payment plan. Those folks can apply for a water meter, get it put in, and make payments on it, and sign up, make small monthly payments until they get it paid for. So, that was a huge thing now, it's just to make the water safe. And the more people that we have in the county, the chances of contaminated wells is getting more incredible. So, that was a good move that we did. Other than that, I shadow all the remarks by the fellow Commissioners, and appreciate your comments. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Paul?
Aw, man.
[music]